Good afternoon. I'm Council President Nick J. Mosby. Here to present on Council Bill. Do we have a council number? The council bill number? Got you. Council Bill 23-0428. That's the mayor's redistricting plan. Joining me today in the chambers from my far left is Councilman Z. Cohen, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Councilman Chris Burnett, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Chairman John Bullock, Chairman Robert Stokes, our amazing staff for the day, Ms. Marguerite Kern, Chairman Conway, Mark Conway, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Chairwoman Dani McCray, and Chairman Eric Costello of, from the office of the City Council President. We have Ms. Tiffany Macklin. From the administration today, we have Laura Larson, Finance Budget Director, Sarah Pernilliam. Come on, get me right.
Parnillum.
Parnillum, alright, from Planning, Gabriel Stewart Sikowitz, Sikowitz, right? Elena De Pietro from Law, and Marvin James, Chief of Staff for the Mayor. And then we also have Mr. Anthony Fairfax, who's joining the council. He's going to work with the council as the council's expert as we conduct this new process. We also have Dominic McAuley from the office of the mayor as well. So with that, we're going to turn it over to the administration to begin. The way that we're going to conduct today's hearing is the administration is going to present on the process and on the map to the council and to the citizens of Baltimore to let folks understand and know this process started last Monday with introduction from the mayor to the council at last council's meeting. There is a very short time period in which this process must take place, 60 days time period. So obviously, that's why we're having this initial meeting relatively quickly and then potentially another meeting on Friday that will be discussed post this meeting. As we get into it, we'll understand the importance of this map, what it means not only as it relates to shared resources from a council legislative and administration perspective, but also what it means to the voters. And I think that this is a process, just from public edification, that doesn't just take place locally, but it takes place on a state level as well as on a federal level every 10 years, and we're going to go into that. So after the administration presents kind of the rhyme and reason of where they are with this particular map that was given to the council last Monday, we are going to allow Mr. Fairfax to speak, just from his expertise, his background, on the process and on the map, and then we'll open it up for questions and concerns from members of the council, and then we're going to open it up for any testimony that the general public might have. We do have some agency reports that we have in. We're going to allow the agencies to also provide any testimony that they would like. From the Law Department, we have comments with favorable. From the Department of Finance, we have favorable with amendments. From the Department of Planning, favorable. The Baltimore Development Corporation, favorable. City Administrator, favorable with amendment. And then we also have comments from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And I think I saw Madam CEO Dana Moore come in earlier, if she has not stayed. So then after we go through that, will be an opportunity for us all to just take a sit back and listen to try to understand and know what the next steps forth will be for the council. I'll urge residents out there to look at your boundaries, look at your map, your districts, and I'll also urge council members to do the same. Obviously, this is a really, really important process, but that must take place in such a short window based off of the city charter and what we have in front of us. So with that, we're going to turn it over at this point to the administration. Mr. Chief of Staff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. A pleasure to be able to come in front of this august body and talk about the Mayor Scott's redistricting plan. The administration has prepared a brief presentation for your review as well as the public's as well. Thank you. For today's presentation, just for sake of overview, we'll talk a little bit about the background, a little bit about the process. Focus areas, drafting of the map, key challenges in which the administration has worked through significant changes, as well as an overview of the proposed map, which all of the council members, including the council president, has been privy to as well. So the city council district map will look to rebalance the representation of Baltimore's diverse communities, as it has already been stated by the council president. This is something that is required by city charter to happen every 10 years. Mayor Scott's proposal is based upon that city charter and then utilized by 2020 census data. It is very clear that the changes of the reflection of our change in city was absolutely taken into account for what was the population and then our communities that have experienced exponential growth as well. We are, of course, looking to do our best to be able to make sure that we are well ahead of what is the February 1 deadline. We have received a lot of feedback from the council persons that are looking to make sure that this is done well before the May 2024 primaries as well, which is to, of course, give the candidates more than enough time to be able to interact, particularly those council persons that have dramatic changes in their district, to give them more than enough time to be able to communicate with the potential new council person along with the State Board of Elections as well to give them more than enough time to prepare as well. And so this is not done, this was not done slowly. This was done with the sense of being able to make sure that we could collectively do this together. So for the process, our first step in the redistricting process was, of course, working with our law department. Our law department provided us guidance on the requirements of the redistricting process. The next part is that we started to work with our planning department to be able to highlight the existing disparities amongst each district, of course, or whether or not there was exponential growth within those changes as well. More importantly, to be able to go back and look at where it was last drawn so that we could rebalance the populations of those districts as well. The focus areas in which planning and, of course, the law and the mayor's office looked to work through was the following three areas, which is population, it being contiguous, and then, of course, our districts operating in a level of compactness. The districts for population, of course, should have some level of equality in population, and then, of course, working around what was the accepted mean according to the US Census data as well. Contiguous, which talks about basically you being able to travel from any part of the district to any other part without crossing the district's boundary. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. Compactness, which is the district should be compact, although compactness does not require a district to be any particular shape or size. For the actual drafting of the map, the map was taken and considered, the mayor asked for us to be able to think about being able to have some type of anchored institution and in the temp to ensure that at least one anchor institution was located in each district. That was not a requirement, but also just one of the things that we looked, one of the variables that we looked to consider to be able to make sure that we had a balance in all of the council's districts. It is also to ensure that each district population falls into the legally required range of 41,836, which is the median of where we stand according to US Census data. And then, of course, lastly, we tried to intentionally maintain the current boundaries as much as possible while meeting the requirements of the law. The key challenges specifically within this redistricting was that we had two districts that had exponential growth. Districts 1, which, of course, is District 1 and District 11, respectfully, Councilman Chairman Eric Costello and Councilman Z. Cohen's district, which, of course, probably grew well over 20,000 residents respectfully since the last time we have redrawn maps. Another significant challenge is that we worked to put John Hopkins Bayview return back from District 1 to District 2, which was removed during the 2010 census. District 10, which prior to the 2010 census redistricting, included all of the South Baltimore Peninsula, but was added back to a portion of the peninsula to assist in the reduction needed for District 11. Of course, this is a overview of the proposed map as is, and we, the administration, have worked to be able to provide the map publicly and to make sure that everyone has access to not only just seeing the actual districts in which they are drawn, but also that they have an awareness of what are the precincts and the populations added to, excuse me, added during this proposed map. One of the things that we left out, and I apologize, I did not include during the key challenges that some have asked about, which is about the rule of splitting precincts. There have been many requests that came in from council people that might work with a specific community, or more importantly, even if it is not in their district, they had a strong desire to be able to work with a specific community. We are unable to split precincts. It is of best practice, according to the State Board of Elections, that we do not split precincts, but also, more importantly, want to be able to lift up to the council persons that the Department of Planning does not draw precincts, that we draw boundaries, and it is up to the State Board of Elections to be able to draw precincts. Outside of that, this is the proposed map, and we are here to answer any questions from the councils. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chief of Staff. I'd like to also recognize that Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District has joined us today. I guess we probably expected to maybe go district by district. Mr. Chief of Staff, I'm not sure if you're prepared to do that. It's fine, but I guess, just to open it up to council members, do you have any specific questions at the moment for the administration? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Marvin and I have been in discussion. I've also been in discussion with Jared DiMarinus at the Board of Elections, with the understanding, the Chief of Staff just touched on the issue of splitting precincts, but did say, for clarification, we draw boundaries. The State Board of Elections actually creates precincts. I spoke today with Jared DiMarinus, again, about this process, and he doesn't see any other way except that we, that it goes in that order, that we draw the boundaries and then they create the precincts as a result of that. And, but we spoke specifically about the concept of creation of ghost precincts, and I want to make sure everybody here is familiar with this concept because they already do exist within our existing map of precincts and boundaries. A ghost precinct is one that specifically gets created through the process of local redistricting whereby an existing precinct has some portion of it essentially cut off, and that portion has within it zero voters, so that we are not running afoul of the state process of reapportioning voters within a precinct. We are just lopping off a portion of a district for some other purpose than the reapportioning of voters between districts. This could be for the purpose of reallocating assets or parts of public assets or things, for example, from one district to another for, say, the consolidation of anchor institutions or consolidation of other assets. And based on my conversations with Jared DiMarinus, the Director of the State Board of Elections, the process is that we would just draw a line to create such a district and on the, once the map is approved, assuming such a change is approved through the legislative process, after the fact the Board of Elections would certify or whatever, that that has been created and assign a precinct number to it. Thank you.
Any feedback from the administration? Am I good?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, are there any additional questions or concerns from other members of the council? Madam VP?
Just to delve a little bit more with what my colleague just talked about. I remember a precinct being moved because of, you know, renovation of a school. And just through my experience, well, two precincts were basically moved because of things going on at that particular school or area, which was really kind of sloppy. And then as far as splitting precincts, I've had, I have a couple split precincts that have been split, you know, for the last 18, 20 years. I'm just, and those precincts are still, you know, split. So I think you had made a comment, you're trying to avoid splitting precincts when there, you know, there are some that are already heavily split. It would seem like you would try to accommodate to get rid of that split.
So, Councilwoman, thank you for your comment. For just clarification, there's a difference between communities in which are split between precincts and actual precincts that have been split. What we are discussing today specifically for us and what rose the comment is about us splitting an actual precinct as it is. And so I'll use, for example, that there are districts in which you and Councilman Slyfer, precincts are communities in which you all might operate on the actual line of, but it is an actual precinct by itself versus an actual community that is split. So when we are talking about not splitting a precinct, we're talking about, for instance, you know, splitting 22031 down the middle or across to be able to assist with population and/or creating a new precinct. For sake of clarity, the idea here is not that it cannot be done. So I want to be able to lift that up for the council specifically. There is no law in which does not allow for the splitting of precincts. Jared Demantis, who Councilman Dorsey was speaking about, is now the new director, is the new head, director of our State Board of Elections and whom provided counsel to the administration to be able to make sure that we were in concert with what is their best practice, but also not only about what is their best practice, but about making sure that they are fully prepared for the upcoming primary, which is happening in 2024.
My second question, you had mentioned something about, did you review the 2010 redistricting and the changes that took place during 2010?
For the sake of background information, yes, ma'am.
Was some of that used in your decision-making?
What I will say is that it was not utilized in our decision-making. It was to help inform the process of what took place during the last redistricting process. So to be clear, for example, there was not a desire using Councilwoman Porter's district as an example of going back or recreating what her district might have looked like during 2010, but it was also helpful for us to be able to utilize the information of how planning process, what were, what were changes that have occurred, what were things that they thought about during that process. And so I would, I would stay away from the idea that we used it to purely create what was our process in here, but when we're talking about informing and for us just being educated, yes, ma'am.
Did you include the present things that are taking place in districts, all of our districts, the present development, I guess, to be specific?
What I will say is that-
That will increase the population.
Sure, yes, yes, ma'am. What I will say is that we are unable, we are unable to include any variable during redistricting in which there is no actual population while we are thoughtful of what is developments that in which are happening in specific districts, unless it was centered around population that in itself was not a variable, specifically at least for what was Mayor Scott's review of the map. Yes, ma'am.
Is that a variable that can be included?
I think, to be clear, it is something that we were thoughtful of when we're talking about understanding the makeup of a district, but specifically the three areas in which we were legally obligated to review, which was about the mass being compact, about them being contiguous, and then, of course, overall about us being able to meet the population mean for each district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, are there any additional questions? I see the hand raised of Councilman Cohen. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief James. I have some frustrated constituents, and while we are happy for our growth in southeast, it is always tough to lose anybody. Wanted to ask just about the stakeholder engagement process. How did you all, as the mayor's office, think about engaging various stakeholders at the community level? You mentioned anchor institutions. How, how did stakeholders play into the map that you all produced?
So I think that, thank you for your question, Councilman. I think that one of the things that we worked diligently to be able to do is to make sure that we operated with a North Star of what are the three things that were legally required, as I stated before, which was population, which is about it being compact and contiguous, and then, of course, about it being compact and contiguous. I think that through the council process, which and what we are doing now, is that we looked for there to be a community engagement throughout this process. And so, of course, we have alerted through our mayor's office of neighborhoods to community association presidents, and then, of course, particularly as people came in contact with the actual map to hear their feedback. That is separate from what is the planned process to be able to do community engagement of the finalized and voted map, which I want to not confuse for the sake of media, and then, of course, the council as well.
Appreciate that. So just for clarity, sort of the mayor's team, the understanding was, let's hit these three buckets hard, contiguous, making sure population, making sure that you're able to get from one side to the other, and wait for the stakeholder engagement until this part of the process, which is the council having the map?
Yes, sir, but also want to add that we are fully aware that change is extremely difficult for any constituent, for any business and/or organization in which has been in concert with their councilperson for well over 10 years now. And so, again, the desire was to be able to make sure that we were able to work through this legislative process as well as alerting the public through our various communication channels of the potential of change, knowing that there is still a legislative process that we had to work through. It would be incredibly difficult to take in account for every community association president, every constituent that would like to be able to maintain their councilperson, understanding the overall changes, which we've had to take into account during this process. So we wanted to first, outside of just alerting of the fact that redistricting was happening, was to go through the legislative process and then to be able to do community stakeholder engagement during the process.
Thank you, Chief James. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council- Thank you, uh, Councilmen. Are there any additional? I see the hand raised of, uh, Councilwoman Porter. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, Mr. James, I had a quick question about undocumented persons that live in the city of Baltimore. How did you all, um, integrate them within the boundary lines of these districts?
Thank you so much, um, for your, uh, for your question, woman, uh, for your question, Councilwoman Porter. Um, there was no, um, to be clear, that the data in which we use is from the latest, latest twenty-twenty census, and so, um, we are very clear about what, I did, we are very clear that the census data in which we are presented is not a hundred percent, uh, encapsulates which is our population in the city, depending on whether or not, um, people have actually filled out the data, but that is what we are required, um, by law, um, to be able to work through. Uh, and so, uh, it is not that we did not take them in account, um, we worked specifically in which the guidelines that we received to be able to make sure that the map is working through, uh, to reach its mean, uh, for each council district.
Well, thank you. Uh, and I also saw the hand raised of, uh, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my question, uh, that, uh, so we've deleted, well, according to your map, that we're trying to delete portions of District thirteen, which is the upper part of Bella Edison, uh, from like the eastbound, uh, Bella Edison, which would be like the Woodstock area and the Erman Avenue area. And what we're doing is that we're excluding that part of District thirteen to District three, and I'm wondering why are we picking up parts of District one as opposed to just keeping District thirteen, exactly where is that? What made you come to that, you know, decision to, you know, change that group individuals that look like me, that I represent? This is not about Councilman Glover, it's about saving the residents of East Baltimore that look like me as I leave, you know, the council, as I move on. So what was your decision to pick up District one and delete that huge majority of my district, which is African-American, to District three?
Uh, thank you for your question, uh, Councilman. I think first, what I want to be, uh, very clear about on the front end of your question is that we, as the administration, understand, um, how difficult this process is, um, not just for, uh, you all as councilpersons that have represented, whether you're just coming in or have served, uh, for an extended amount of time, but, uh, specifically for when we are talking about any district, um, not just your district alone, um, we had to think about a plethora of issues in which had to go in into making sure that the district was as, um, as, uh, as, reached its population median as much as possible. And so using your district as a, a perfect example, which is that we, every district had, already had a, a certain amount within each district, and so we were only able to pull as much as possible from certain districts to be able to balance out it across each district. And so, um, if there was an ability for us to be able to pull from the north versus being able to pull from the south, we would have worked at least to review that accommodation. But it makes it extremely difficult because of the population growth in the first versus the third to be able to actually make that happen. Um, you know, the, I'll use, uh, Councilman, uh, Bullock's district as a perfect example, which was required to pull from almost four different districts, uh, to be able to balance out that number because there was only but so much that we could pull from to be able to do our best to try to meet that median as much as possible. Um, and so you should not see it as a direct reflection to be able to remove people out of your district, um, that looks like you. Um, I will stand in concert, uh, with those people as a, uh, son of the east side, uh, that they love you dearly, uh, but, uh, to be very clear, um, that, um, we had to work to be able to try to pull, um, as much to be able to pull from that district to balance out which was already increased, um, to level out to reach a median.
And, and another, and, and, you know, with respect to my, my colleagues, was there a reason that you couldn't go to District fourteen or District two as opposed to coming to District thirteen? I mean, they're all surrounded, was it that we needed to also add to those respective districts as well?
So the, the, how you should see it, Councilman, is that it, it is not about necessarily about, uh, lacking to pull from those certain specific districts in which you discussed today, but that, for example, if we had already reached the median in a certain district, uh, according to the census data which was provided, we would, it would be impossible for us to do our best to reach, uh, number one, the population median, but also mean, but also, of course, to be able to reach what is kind of like our equity, um, we're talking about race, population size, all of those things, uh, which are, are factors in which the mayor's, uh, office thought about in doing so. So it is not about just whether or not we pull from that specific district, but about whether or not if we pull from that district, will the population median be able to, uh, will the population median be, uh, mean, be affected in doing so? Uh, so not necessarily about whether or not we pull from the top or the, uh, from, you know, the north or the south of the district, but about whether or not that district is impacted in a certain way that would not allow us to meet that clause.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. At this time, are there any additional questions or concerns for the administration? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna go into, uh, the agency reports. First up, uh, the Law Department, um, we have Deputy Solicitor, Mr. Salisbury, or Elena DePietro? All right, Deputy Solicitor?
Sure, I, I can do it. I mean, I'll, I'll be very brief. Uh, I think as the Chief of Staff got into, we submitted our bill report, uh, we approved the map for form and legal sufficiency. There's a number of, uh, factors that we looked into that are detailed in the bill report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about those.
Thank you. Just one question, um, we asked for a formal opinion, uh, because we understand, you know, it's such a tight window, so I think it's really important that we kind of communicate that not only to the council members, but also to the general public, um, the sixty-day requirement, um, and, um, so we received the map on last Monday. Um, we're meeting today, eight days later, right? So that gave everyone a chance to kind of, um, digest it and, and, and figure out next steps for it, to give us stability and meat. We have another meeting that's scheduled for this Friday, uh, and the reason, uh, and want to talk to you, talk through this to make sure we're on the same page and, uh, kind of we put on the record, the reason is, uh, because if we do not take action, um, on Friday, uh, in a special meeting, uh, to allow us to then hear it on Monday, uh, then that will nullify the council's ability to override a mayor's veto based off of the sixty days and the three meetings rule. Um, we formally requested that opinion and just kind of wanted to put that on record and talk through that. Um, or, uh, could you, could you kind of communicate that to the council? I, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as relates to, um, you know, our hands are tied with the schedule based off of the charter and based off of the opinion from the solicitor, that if we, if, if we take action in the sixty days and the mayor vetoes that action, then the council wouldn't have any action post that if it falls outside of the sixty-day window.
Sure, so I'm happy to speak to this, and I would just say, you know, the, the opinion, we would refer back to the opinion for the particulars, um, but basically what the opinion said is that this is treated like an ordinance, like any other ordinance, so in the council, if the council were to submit an alternate map or to amend the mayor's map, um, that would start the same timeframe that any other ordinance would start, uh, and that does, so, so whatever the time requirements around, uh, vetoing, submitting a veto or alternatively overriding a veto apply to this process just like they do to any other ordinance. Um, the only unique feature of the redistricting process is you have the sixty-day timeframe, which means that the process has to be completed by sixty days following the introduction of the mayor's map. So, um, I know that was, I don't do the math off the top of my head, but I'm guessing that's sometime in early November. If it was, if it was introduced in September eighteenth, whatever sixty days is following that, the map would, would take effect.
I appreciate that. I think the hangup is, um, I think the specific language is, um, the council must take action in sixty days.
Correct.
So the, the council doing, um, its due diligence, um, within that window, um, obviously it's the three-rule meeting, um, the, the way the interpretation from the solicitor's office is, um, not just this mayor, but any mayor could run the clock out if they knew that that three-rule meeting flowed past that sixty days, um, because at that point the council wouldn't have any legislative, um, uh, authority or autonomy to, to, to take any action. Um, so I think that, I think that that's where the interpretation was, you know, when I went to, um, our general council in reading that, you know, what is the definition of council taking action? It was my understanding as a layperson, not an attorney, that we took action if we passed it out of the council, giving it to the mayor, but we still will be afforded the ability to potentially do an override by having those three meetings in between and that a mayor, not just this mayor, any mayor, uh, would not be able to just run the clock out, knowing that there was nothing that the council could do with a veto.
Right, so I think I understand the question, and again, I think that would only be premised on the idea if the mayor were to try to, to do that, um, and I think, you know, again, the same analysis we provided, and we refer back to the opinion on this, is that the sixty-day rule is, is what's in the charter and has always been interpreted as sixty days following the interpretation of the original map. Um, again, the, you know, if the council were, I think what you're setting forth would be a timeframe that would preclude the mayor from doing exactly what you're saying, which I, I think is true, um, but even if the council hadn't done that, it, that wouldn't, that, that would only, that's premise on the, on the idea that the mayor would try to deliberately, um, run that, the clock out and, and preclude the council from having the time to exercise the, or, or override the, the mayor's veto.
So I guess from the administration, um, when the council does its work today, um, because we don't want to be presumptuous about where the mayor is and where the administration is, with, if the council's allowed to do its work, will the administration allow the council a chance, uh, to veto override in the sixty days? Because if not, that's, that, that's why we have to vote it out on Friday to set us up. So that, that's the question right there, um, and I think it's, it's pretty close for us to determine, um, if that's something that the administration's willing to support or not.
Well, I'm not gonna, I can't speak to the mayor on that, but I would just, I would refer-
But I, I, I just, I, I guess I was kind of speaking to your point of, you know, we don't want to say that that's something that the mayor would do, well, we could quickly determine today if the mayor will support us, the council, in saying that, hey, the council will give, it, the, the administration will give the council time to do its work, uh, and that we don't have to rush to try to figure out a map between now and Friday, uh, in order to stay in, in the confines of the opinion associated with the solicitor's office.
Yeah, well, again, I, I, I wouldn't try to speak on, on behalf of the administration on that point. All I can say is I would refer back to the legal opinion we gave on the timeframe for, uh, the ordinance to be introduced and considered and, and the typical veto rules applying to, as, as it would to any other ordinance.
Got you. Uh, Chief of Staff, James, do you understand the dilemma that the council's in and what we're trying to go down a path of understanding?
I would have to take some time, uh, Mr. Council President, to confer with our legal department to be able to make sure that I have a full-
That's fine. I just want, I thought that was a really good point, uh, you know, when we came out with the schedule, many people had questions, concerns about the schedule, I think it's important for us to all be on the same page associated with, uh, the schedule. Um, I, I, I guess the, 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 the real, uh, crux of the matter is, um, I guess the, the, the legal opinion of what does council take in action in sixty days? Again, as a, a layman, you know, it was, it was my understanding that that was meaning that we would go through this process, we would vote it out on first reader, second reader, third reader, and that was us fulfilling our statutory, uh, uh, duty associated with the charter and that no matter when the mayor decided to veto or whatever, the council will still have the legislative, uh, uh, autonomy to do what the council's ultimately here to do, uh, and that there couldn't be a fixture of running out of the clock, uh, and just kind of nullifying the council's ability to take legislative action.
Yeah, and just to be clear, and, and that specific opinion, I, I don't know, I think what we did is we tried to go back and look at the history of this, and what we saw was always a process that stuck to that sixty-day timeframe, and that's really was the basis for the opinion that was, that was delivered, but happy to talk to the, um, to the mayor, to the mayor's office, to the Chief of Staff about this issue and, and talk to your office further about it.
And I, and, and, Mr. President, I think that just to add for the sake of timeline, of course, we, we, we've started this process, uh, about a month ago, um, uh, some of my predecessors, uh, started kind of like the early iterations of this, but of course, um, uh, under my tenure at least to be able to move expeditiously, uh, to be able to reach what has been the mayor's internal timeline, I think that, um, we are open, what we would say, um, particularly is that we, we want to work to be able to receive feedback, but of course for it to be collective in nature, um, so I just wanted to say that for, for the record.
No, I appreciate that. I, I think, um, you know, I speak as President of City Council, um, not sure how many members I speak for, uh, that would agree with this, but, you know, I, I just think that the council, uh, always wants to be in the position to do the council's work, right? And, um, you know, obviously a, a determination has come out, you know, this council has sat through where there've been really big bills that, you know, we had to wait out that three-meeting, uh, kind of grace period, uh, for the administration to determine what they're going to do, but this is a little more unique because there is that sixty-day requirement, and again, if the mayor decides to veto on the sixty-first day, uh, at that point, the council would have zero ability to take any action. So, again, just for the record, that's why the Friday meeting is there, uh, that's why, uh, we have to go into Monday from a double read, uh, and that's where we're at moving forward. So I wanted everybody to be on the same page, so we're clear about the schedule, that this is not a schedule, uh, that City Council President Nick Mosby came up with, uh, this is a schedule that's built from a statutory requirement of the charter, uh, based off the opinion of the city solicitor's office. Um, uh, next, we're gonna go to the Department of Finance.
Hi, Gabriel Stuart Seigowitz for the, for Department of Finance. We stand by our report as we do not oppose.
Thank you, Gabriel. Just one quick question, uh, we've been attempting to get shape maps, um, and speaking to my colleagues across the country, uh, that go through this process, that have gone through this process, Baltimore, um, you know, we're kind of, uh, one of the last major cities to, 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 to do this that were on the same clock as us, but in working with planning, they've always been able to receive shape files to allow the council, again, to do its work. Uh, so, you know, obviously we have a very short window, you know, the expectation is for us to literally have, um, I think twelve days to kind of go through this process based off of the solicitor's opinion, uh, and giving us a picture is really hard to do. So just wondering, I know that there's a lot of work, you know, Chief of Staff, I'm pretty sure he's been working really hard to kind of figure out and configure the districts. Um, I guess we've asked for over a week for the, um, shape files. What program does planning use in coming up with these configurations?
So I'm with the Department of Finance.
I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking on behalf of planning, I'm sorry, Gabriel. Uh, is any, anyone here from planning? Oh, I'm, um, Sarah, could you talk to us about, I guess, planning's process? If you guys actually use software or do you kind of just use something in PDF to, uh, come up with the map?
Uh, we used ArcGIS, um, to, I, I think it's on, can you hear me? Sarah Parnell, Department of Planning, we used ArcGIS to, um, be able to aggregate the census data to the, um, precincts and then be able to, um, identify, um, the population to understand if it is, um, even across the districts, and we've created a public-facing app, um, so, um, so people can access the data, um, including what the population is for each precinct.
Yeah, I think the interactive map is extremely helpful, particularly for, uh, constituents, um, but it's not as helpful for the council to kind of do its work. So I was wondering, um, we've requested the shape files, um, in the past, is that something that the planning department would not provide to council or we haven't really received an answer back? As our only way of receiving this map is PDF, obviously you being in planning, you can only imagine how difficult it is with the thousands of different points, uh, inside of a, 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 a district map of a city of this size with fourteen districts, how hard it would be to kind of maneuver and adjust the map- how hard it would be to kind of maneuver and adjust a map like that, that is literally just a PDF picture. So wondering, in the past, has the council been precluded from receiving the actual shape file to do the legislative work? Was there a problem this time around? We really haven't received answers in our request for the shape files.
I haven't received a request from the council for the shape files. We thought that the public-facing app had the information to be able to see the population, so I'm.
Yeah. If I could, Mr. President, I believe that I understand a part of your question. We have publicly made the map available beyond the PDF. So online, the council and any other member of the public is able to view the boundaries and population size as well as different other makeups, whether, you know, gender, ethnicity, as well to be able to view it beyond the PDF. So I just want to state that for clarity. And I want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
No, we are. And I agree with everything you just said. But it's not what I'm actually talking about. So yes, the interactive map, as I stated before, is definitely great for constituents, for institutions, for folks to kind of go in and see the proposed map. But the request that we've sent over to the mayor's office, I believe on two different occasions, and when we had our brief discussion on it, you know, I specifically asked what format would the council receive it in. As a person who's worked in GIS, I knew that just sending us over a PDF file, again, with the thousands upon thousands of points inside of the configuration associated with the councilmatic districts, it's really impossible to kind of, to Councilman Glover's point, you know, this particular precinct he has problems with, you know, he wants to kind of retain another part of his district. When you move this point, you have to move other points. It's really challenging to do that on a PDF and it's impossible to basically do that with the interactive map. That's why, you know, we've been asking, you've received the request for the shape file?
What I received was a request from your office regarding being able to have access to the map in which we provided and open to the public. And so if, for whatever reason, there is a requirement for the shape file, I believe that the administration would absolutely be open to being able for the council to work with the Department of Planning and consult, then yes. I think that is something that we'd be open to.
Okay. We'll reforward that request.
Yes, sir.
You know, obviously, when we had a discussion, that was something that was really important to me, particularly knowing this very abridged timeframe that we're kind of dealing with, not wanting to waste time of looking at a PDF or dealing with a PDF, but working with the actual native file for us to do our legislative work. So I'm not sure if that wasn't the case of the past councils. But as we continue to push forward with best practices and professionalizing council in a way for us to do our legislative duty, that is a requirement. You know, just for council members, I think that maybe that's something that maybe we even put into the charter that when we receive the map, that it's a way that the council can digest and manipulate in a way for us to do this work as opposed to just a picture. But we'll resend the email, Mr. Chief of Staff, and then we'll move forward from there. Thank you so much. Thank you, Law Department. Thank you, Finance. Thank you, Planning. We also have a favorable from the Baltimore Development Corporation. We have a favorable with amendment from the city administrator. That's what it says on this sheet. I'm pretty sure the city administrator probably does not have any amendments, but maybe it's just a slight opinion in the letter. And then we have comments from the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Are there any additional questions from members of the council for the administration? I see the hand raised of Councilman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chief of Staff, we had a hearing on a resolution that I introduced right after the primaries last year because the primary last, or in 2022, with the state elections, they had done redistricting in such a constricted timeframe that the State Board of Elections didn't have enough time to get itself together. And so we saw a lot of irregularities, and I think you and I talked about this. The hearing that we had, I believe, was in April. And at the time, we were assured that there would be, you know, that we would actually get the map sometime in the summer. That didn't occur. So I'm wondering, I mean, we're not only on this 60-day constricted timeframe, but the fact is that we're getting so much closer to the primary that it becomes an issue for the State Board and the local board so that we don't have any elections irregularities. I'm just curious if you can let us know a little bit about the timing of the process? You had said that you started about a month ago when you came on. But I was under the impression that the administration had started prior to that to try to get this going. So, and as you know, I think I was the councilperson that pestered you the most on getting this done because I heard the urgency from the State Board about how important this was. So just curious about what the delay ended up being.
Thank you for your question, Councilwoman. First of all, I want to thank you for your advocacy in making sure that this process moved along. I think that, as I stated before, of course, my predecessors started this process in being able to start to gain just information from councilpersons about districts that they were absolutely thoughtful. Number one, that they were thinking about the redistricting process, that there was a first level of engagement about the actual process. But I think that, of course, coming into the role as Chief of Staff and then following the direction of the mayor, as well as what was the transition from Ms. Linda Lamone to Jarrett Demantis coming in at the State Board, that we worked collectively to be able to make sure that we were able to move this as fast as possible. As already explained, we introduced a version last month. And then, of course, just because of what was timing, it was required for timing, we presented it in the last council meeting. But to be very clear, and I want to make this abundantly clear for the council as well, which is that Mr. Demantis has been very clear about that even if we do go to the, even if we got to the month of February, that the State Board would be ready. I want to be very clear about that and not making this seem as though that the State Board of Elections would not be ready even if we walked up to the deadline and which was required by the city charter. This was about doing our best to be able to make sure that the State Board had more than enough time to be able to speak to the irregularities that you speak about and that we have seen in certain past elections in post-redistricting.
So that is a good point, that the State Board, under the previous chair, had said to us that they need additional time because, you know, they go through two audit processes to make sure that the voting lists, especially along the new boundaries, are correct, which is why they, how they found the irregularities during the primaries because that second or the first audit revealed them. So, yeah, I had been hoping that we would have the map much more ahead of time, as you know, so that we could go through the process as well, so that there would be enough time for the board, but also enough time for us also. So thanks for outlining that for us. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any additional questions or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, at this time, we're going to turn to Mr. Anthony Fairfax from Census Channel. He was retained by the council maybe a year and a half, two years ago, you know, waiting on this process to occur so we could be ready, as prepared as possible. I'm not going to get into Mr. Fairfax's background or, you know, how he's traveled around the block a couple of times associated with these redistricting. I'll allow him to do that. But he's going to walk us through, I guess, from his expert opinion where we are, next steps for the council. And then between now and Friday, council members, will be an opportunity for us to continue to express any concerns, questions, or just give support for the current proposed map. Mr. Fairfax, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I think I need to share my screen. So I think I need permission to share my screen.
I can multitask a little bit. Mr. Fairfax, all yours.
Can you see my screen right now? Excellent. No, that's fine. I think I'll, as long as I can see it right here. There you go. Excellent. Council President, city council members, and of course, concerned citizens. First, let me say it's an honor and a pleasure to be here to talk about something that impacts all of us, which is redistricting, whether we know it or not. I'm going to do like my brother-in-law, who's a Baptist minister, says and does, which is cut across the field and get to the point right away. And so what I wanted to do was to go through some educational slides because I think it's important for everyone who's involved in redistricting to understand redistricting and the concepts that we are using in order to make a intelligent decision on which plans to actually consider. And so I've got three different topics that I'm going to cover. Some background information, rules of redistricting, and redistricting data. And then finally, some, just some comments, some cursory comments on the mayor's plan insofar as what I can glean from what I've looked at so far. And so just to give you some background, as the council president said, I've been around the block a little bit, meaning I'm old. I'm a demographic and mapping consultant. I have a company, Census Channel LLC. I've got a master's in geospatial information science and technology from NC State and a bachelor's of science in electrical engineering from Virginia Tech. I've got over 30 years of redistricting experience. This is my fourth redistricting cycle. I provided services, redistricting services, for a wide range of local, regional, and national clientele, some that you probably have heard of. I've developed nearly 1,000, probably this round I will overcome 1,000, exceed 1,000 redistricting plans that I've developed. And they covered 24 different states and they range from small localities to statewide congressional plans. And I've been fortunate or blessed to reach the level of an expert and I've testified in state and federal redistricting court cases. Just to give you some background, and I think everyone knows this, that's here. Of course, we know that redistricting is the redrawing of district boundary lines. When it's the first time that you draw, it's called districting many times, not redistricting. And it occurs every 10 years right after the decennial census. And why do we do it? Well, we do it to adhere to the one-person-one-vote concept that extends from the Equal Protection Clause of 14th Amendment, where the courts specifically, to seem, the Supreme Court has deemed it guided us to actually redraw boundary lines where the districts are equally populated. And that's within a certain deviation, they call it, and I'll go over that a little later. And so we adjust these boundary lines periodically to equalize the population of the districts. And we do that right after the decennial census because that's when we actually have the most recent population figures and where people reside. This is a point to just sort of put a plug in for the census. If we do not have an accurate census, then we do not come up with fair districts. So the census is tied really to redistricting. Just to give you an idea, the Supreme Court and other courts have established cases and guidelines over the last 60 years. Redistricting has gone on for 200 years, but it's just been in the last 60 years where the Supreme Court said their redistricting is judiciable. So over the last 60 years, they've come up with or given guidance on court cases that have shaped what I call modern-day redistricting. And one of the things that they've done is they have defined, to a certain extent, what I call the rules of the game. And that's how you actually draw redistricting plans, by following or adhering to these rules or guidance. If you look throughout the country, there are about five different, what they call traditional redistricting criteria or guideline, sometimes they call it, or principles. And they include equal population, contiguity, compactness, respecting political subdivision boundaries, and preserving communities of interest. So you'll see that permeate through just about all of the jurisdictions, or at least many of the jurisdictions, statewide and local jurisdictions. You also see, as you have here, preserving district cores or sometimes they call it existing boundary lines and natural boundaries. And I'm going to go into each one of these in a little bit. And other unique aspects to each of the states, sometimes other criteria such as nesting and whole county provision. You see that voting rights bullet or block over there to the right. Normally, I have a separate slide for that. And the reason why is because the voting rights really isn't a criteria. Voting rights is a mandate. You have to follow the Voting Rights Act. Whereas the other ones are criteria where there are exceptions to the rules and what you can and cannot do. The yellow criteria are ones that the city of Baltimore directly includes in its criteria. The orange are the ones that actually are indirectly included in the criteria, and I'll get to that right now. The city, the Baltimore City Charter, Article 3, Section 7, is what we turned to to find out the criteria of what we actually do to draw these district boundaries. And of course, you can see that they actually mirror the ones that I had. I pulled them over to the right side. You have equal population, contiguous territory, which is contiguity. You have compactness. And then the other ones, natural boundaries and existing council line. The last one, where it says standards established by the Supreme Court of the United States, they include those orange ones that I had in the previous slide. So they would include the guidance by the Supreme Court to preserve communities of interest or to respect political subdivision boundaries. And they also include also things such as race not predominating, where you cannot draw a district where race actually predomines. A series of court cases in the 90s compels us to not do that. The other sort of guideline or legislation that we want to actually follow here in Baltimore is the one that the, excuse me, I've got a blinking. You all don't see it, but I do. But anyway, I'll continue on. The No Representation-Wide Population Act, and that was passed in 2010. And Maryland led the nation, along with a couple of other states, and actually really attempted to eliminate what's called prison-based gerrymander. And I have an example I'm going to show you in a second. Also, in 2019, they passed a code for localities in 2019, doing the same thing as directed specifically for localities, really. And in essence, what this does, this code does is it directs the county or the city to reallocate the incarcerated persons to their last known address if they reside within the state. And so the purpose is to actually make it fair for all the districts. And I'll show you an example in a second. So that's something that we have to actually adhere to right here as well. I want to go into a little more detail on the equal population. The goal of equal population, of course, is to equally populate the districts within what's called a deviation. In order to do that, we have to understand the ideal population size. And calculating the ideal population size, of course, the system does it, your mapping system does this. It's simple. And you take the jurisdiction population, which is the, which comes from rather the decennial census, and divide the number of. and divide the number of districts into it to get that ideal population size. And so, for example, we had a jurisdiction with ten thousand people. We'd have ten districts. We end up with an ideal population size of one thousand. And that's the population that we're going to shoot for as we're drawing districts. Baltimore has an ideal population size of forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six for the unadjusted, and forty-two thousand one hundred and thirteen for the adjusted. So that's the population that we're trying to actually shoot for when we're drawing districts. The courts ruled there's an acceptable ten percent deviation from that ideal. So what we do is when we're drawing, we make sure that we actually do not exceed that ten percent. And so to calculate the ten percent, you just multiply that ten percent by the ideal. So in that example I gave you, that one thousand, it would end up being a hundred, one hundred people. So that would mean from the lowest populated district to the highest populated district, it can't deviate more than ten percent or that hundred. Usually, map drawers, when they're actually drawing maps, they actually use plus or minus five that keeps them within that. So if you're looking at a plan, you're somewhat looking at plus or minus five and using that as a gauge to whether you're within that ten percent deviation. Now, a jurisdiction can lower that. So recently, I've seen a number of jurisdictions that have said plus or minus two, even plus or minus one. So they can come in and actually lower that deviation or the acceptable deviation. They can't exceed that ten percent, but they can lower it. And you see below, there are some formulas I'm not going to go over. Next is contiguity and compactness, and the slides presenting to the states talked about this.
Mr. Fairfax, one second. Are you changing your slides and they're not appearing to change up there?
Yes, I am.
I see you're looking at your computer.
Yeah.
I'm trying to follow, but.
No, it's not changing.
So can we, maybe take him down as a presenter and put him back up? Say no, I guess, we're not right now.
Say no.
It's working now, I think. Yeah, I think that's what they're trying to do.
Let me see here. And then, yeah, it's, I got two of them. Let me see. I want to make sure I do the right one. I think that's it. Then share.
There we go.
All right, thank you. I should have been looking at the screen versus my screen, so I apologize. Let me just, if everyone understood.
No, we could follow you. It's just, it got confusing when you started talking about you're not going to go over that formula, and I didn't see a formula up there, so I think we're good.
Appreciate that. So this is what I was showing before. This is that slide that talked about the equal population and the how do you actually calculate. And so as I mentioned before, Baltimore is forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six for the unadjusted persons, and then forty-two one thirteen for the adjusted population. And that's what we're shooting for when we're actually drawing the districts. Excellent. And so I'm going to go over contiguity and compactness, and as mentioned before, all areas must be touching or connected to each other. And there are exceptions to this, and the exceptions are sort of water. You can actually connect many times between two areas if there is water. Sometimes there's a stipulation that says you must have a bridge in between the two links. The other exception is the annexed area. Many jurisdictions have annexed areas that are non-contiguous islands, if you will, inside the land. And those, of course, have to be associated with a particular district, of course. So those are the exceptions. Compactness relates to how irregular-shaped or how dispersed the district boundary lines are, and please forgive me for a preposition at the end. And they've come up with what's called compactness measures to measure that. So there are numbers, numerical values, associated with compactness. And usually, those values are such that the closer you get to one, the more compact the district boundary lines are. They also sometimes will use a hundred, so the closer you get to one hundred, the more compact the district boundary lines are. I use three compactness measures, REAG, Polesby Popper, and Convex Hull. And what I want to do is to try to demystify, if you will, compactness. But first, let me talk about contiguity. You see, this is Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, just as an example. You see that area up at top is non-contiguous, and so you'd have to include that in a district. The second is, if you imagine that Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, that district is, or rather, city is a single district. What the REAG plan does, and it's very simple, it seems like it's complicated. It takes the area of the district and the area of that, what's called circumscribe circle, and divides that into the area of the district. And you end up with that value. And so you can see, if you had an extension that stretched out, like a finger, just imagine that, that circle would get larger and larger. So that number that you're dividing into gets smaller and smaller, so it becomes less compact. The second one that I use is called Convex Hull, and that's described as wrapping a rubber band around the district. And it has to include those non-contiguous areas. So the area of the districts and the area of that convex hull is divided into the area of the districts. And once again, to a certain extent, if you get fingers or extensions, you're going to lower the compactness measurement. And then finally, there's one called Polesby Popper, which is a perimeter. And so what this district does is looks at the perimeter. So if you can imagine that Rocky Mountain is a district, and you stretch that boundaries to the circle, to a size or shape of a circle, that's the circle that you're going to take the area and divide it into. So you can see that if you have a lot of nooks and crannies, a lot of ridges, if you will, that's going to make that circle larger and larger. And so dividing that circle, that resulting circle into the district area, is going to lower that number. So it looks for all those nooks and crannies, if you will, boundaries around the district. The next two are political subdivision boundaries and communities of interest. This includes attempting to respect counties, if it's a statewide plan, cities, precincts, or other similarities, such as a voting tabulation district. They call them now voting districts. These are akin to precincts as well, and precincts are covered by political subdivision boundaries. And the idea is to not split or minimize the splitting of these entities. Communities of interest is now growing more and more, and it's becoming more and more popular, and you'll see this in the criteria more and more as time goes on. I've seen it over the decades, actually be integrated more and more. And in essence, the concept of communities of interest is that you want to preserve these areas that have some shared interest, some shared voting interest. And this could be practically anything, anything except for partisan. You can't have a community of interest that's a partisan entity. But it could be income. It could be education, it could be housing patterns, culture, environmental, health, so forth and so on. Practically anything you could probably think of could be a community of interest. Neighborhoods are the most common one. I think we all understand neighborhoods. We live in practically, most likely, rather, a neighborhood. And so we understand the concept of trying to minimize the splits of neighborhoods. And so one of the things that, in analyzing the districts, I did bring in the neighborhood file, and I began to look at the splits of neighborhoods. The problem with neighborhoods is that they do not follow VTDs or precinct lines. So you're going to get a lot of splits anyway, but you try to minimize that as best as you can. The final two are existing boundaries and natural boundaries. And so the idea is to consider the current boundaries. And the reason for that is you don't want the citizens to actually start over from scratch every ten years, to start out with a brand-new plan. So you actually try to, starting point usually when you're drawing will be the current boundaries, and then you adjust the current boundaries as best as you can. Natural boundaries include rivers and streams and caverns, and sometimes even major roads and infrastructures are included in that natural boundaries. And the concept is, is that you don't want this wide gulf between the districts. If you want to add in districts, for example, a river, you don't want to have individuals have to actually disassociate themselves with the other side. Even candidates have a difficult problem with this river and boundary, river streams and caverns being disconnected from the district. The same thing with highway when that's included. If you have a major highways, there is a, almost a natural boundary there that separates the voters one from another. And so you try to minimize that or to prevent that if you can. I've got an example here of the natural boundaries. And so in the current plan, you see the rivers, and you see that the districts are naturally divided by the river. That had Tapsco River in the Northwest Harbor. They naturally divide the districts. And so this is an example of adhering to and following the natural boundaries. It's important when you're doing redistricting and performing redistricting that you understand that there are going to be trade-offs involved. And the trade-offs include, for example, if you're trying to improve equal population, you may split political subdivision or split communities of interest. If you're trying to minimize political subdivision splits, you may have to increase the population deviation, or you may have to reduce compactness. So at all times, you're trying to balance out all of these different trade-offs that you see in front of you. I told you about an example of prison-based gerrymandering. This is why Maryland actually opted in and other states are opting in. And this is an example, an exaggerated example, to give you a reason and a rationale why we do that. Why do you do that? Why do you actually reallocate those individuals, the incarcerated persons? And this is Anamosa, Iowa. They, and this is two decades ago, so it's not recent data, but it gives you the point of what, reason why people are trying to prevent it. And so they had a population of five thousand four hundred and ninety-four. They had four wards or district. There was an ideal population size that I mentioned before, remember, of thirteen hundred and seventy-four. That's what you're trying to shoot for. But they had a prison, a federal prison located in that northwest ward. And that federal prison had thirteen hundred and sixteen people in it. And because they had thirteen hundred and sixteen people, it really resulted to fifty-eight people being the individuals that would actually be capable of voting. But that's not the end of the story. It's less if you include voting-age population, so it would be a lower amount. It would be even less for the number of registered voters. And it would be even less for voters that actually turned out. So it turned out that you had only maybe a couple dozen people actually being capable of actually voting and determining the representative from that different ward. And so the three solutions, and so if you can advocate that the census, next time, 2030, change the residency rule. And so they actually allocate those incarcerated persons to the last known address. If they don't do it, then Maryland and states, other states, will have to do it themselves. And that's what Maryland did. What they did is they created a different data set that adjusts the prisoners to their last known address. The third option for states and jurisdictions that can't afford is to treat the address, treat the incarcerated persons or the prisoners inside the incarcerated persons as a dress unknown and pull them from the population equation that equalizes the population. So you actually come up with a different ideal population size. And this is not a slide on incarcerated persons. This is just to actually get a fair representation of the population that is contained within, inside a particular district. Now, I'm going to go over redistricting data. And there are really sort of two different types of data that you use. There's the decennial data, the PL ninety-four one seventy-one, and it comes from Public Law ninety-four one seventy-one. In the seventies, a law created that designated the government to create this data set for redistricting purposes. Also, we use adjusted data, as I just mentioned. We use also socioeconomic data and other data that's involved, specifically citizen voting age population data, that's important. And then there's the geography data, geographic data, if you will. And that's, every population data must be assigned to some area, and of course, that's important as well. Just to go over a little more detail, because you may see some of the terms involved in this. For total population and voting age population, that PL ninety-four one seventy-one, which is an extract from the decennial census, starting in two thousand, people can select multiple race categories. Prior to that, you could not. You were forced to select black, or forced to select white, or other. Well, now you can select multiple race categories. Because of that, there are sixty-three different race categories that the census tracks. If you look at Hispanic and Latino, the census bill treats Hispanic and Latino or classifies them as an ethnicity and not a race. So you can be Hispanic-black, or Hispanic-white, or Hispanic-black, white, Native American because of those multiple race categories. And so because of that, it doubles it. Now you have a hundred and twenty-six different categories. And that's true for the total population as well as the voting age population. You look there, you see the major race categories. You have white, black, Native American, Asian, Pacific Islander, and then some other race. There's other races. And then you have a two or more. That's the multiple race categories. What you may see when you're looking at plans is a designation of alone. And when you see that, what you're looking at is those individuals that only selected a single race. And so they're just looking at the total of those that selected black, or those that selected black, or white, rather, only. You also may see something called combined, or sometimes they say all parts or any parts. And so you may see any part black, and that means anybody that selected black. It could be black and white, black, white, Native American. So if you see that any parts, or you see that all parts, it means it combines everybody that's elected black, whether it's single race or not. Just to close out, there is a hierarchy of developing, of census geography that you may use in developing plans. At the lowest level is a census block. Nothing goes below that. And you group census blocks together. You get block groups. You group block groups together. You get census tracts, and you get census tracts together. You get counties. You also have voting districts, as I mentioned before. These are analogous to precincts. In many cases, they're identical to precincts. In some cases, they're just slightly off, and in other cases, they don't really resemble the precincts. In Baltimore, in two thousand, they were very similar, very similar. You could use VTDs to actually redraw the boundaries. However, in 2022, the state updated its precincts, so now they're slightly different. So you have to use the precincts now to draw the plans and not the voting districts. And then finally, you have places. These are census places. They include cities and towns and something called CDPs. And you notice that those that are in a line, like census blocks, block groups, census tracts, counties, those are wholly contained within each other. The places is over to the side. So you may end up with actually VTDs crossing over places. And so you may have counties that cross over places as well. So just be on the lookout for that. So that ends my training portion of redistricting, and hopefully you have learned something to add to your knowledge base on redistricting. I thought I'd provide just some general comments on the mayor's plan. And this is the plan that I recreated inside my system. I use a system called MapTitude for redistricting, and I recreated the plan. And so my general comments is that I'm, it appears, I'm not sure whether they're using adjusted data or the unadjusted data. And so the state code says that we use the adjusted data. The second bullet is that the district crossing the. The second bullet is that the district crossing the Pat, 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 Tapsco River, as I will go back and so, there is actually a, an area that is in, was in District 11, that's now in District 10, that actually crosses over the river. Now, I'm not saying that's in violation, but it goes against the natural boundary criteria that's included. So you use that to make decisions of whether it's a better or worse plan. And then finally, there are some non-compact issues. District one and District two and seven and 12. And so in that District one and District two, you see over right at the, above District one, there's that non-compact area that's carved out. And that may raise some questions with citizens in the community. And so those may have to be addressed. The other one is the Districts seven and District 12. You see there's a little non-compact area that also may raise questions about compactness and questions of why. And so that's my presentation. Look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fairfax. I'd like to also introduce that Chairman Slyfer has joined us this evening. I guess, are there any questions or concerns from members of the council? Us? Your hands raised? Oh, I'd like to go to Councilman Torrance.
Can you speak to the compactness concerns with seven? Because I'm utterly confused. I'm just going to be transparent with you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we, we didn't get that question. Could you say it a little louder?
I'm confused around his comments around compactness.
If you look at that area that's added, it lowers the compactness of District seven as well as 12, it's a notch cut out. I'm not saying there's a violation. What I'm saying is that raises questions from citizens that may say, why is that there? That, that's all.
Elaborate.
Elaborate.
So like you're.
Meaning that, oh, I'm sorry.
Like how? Like.
I guess go over the definition of compactness again.
Right.
Could you go back to that?
Let me, you know, compactness has.
If you could.
No, because I know the legal standard of compactness, but I just want to make sure that like you can speak to exactly how it would not meet the legal standard of compactness.
No, 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 no. I think, I think you're misunderstanding. I'm not saying it's invalid.
No, I'm just asking.
I'm saying that it raises questions to citizens probably of the compactness. They may not even call it compactness because they don't know. But they may look at it and say, this looks irregular, this looks funny. It's related to compactness, not that it violates.
The, I'm, so respectfully, can you elaborate? Because I'm, I'm trying to put this in the most polite manner, right? Without being too. You, you say raise questions for citizens, but not elaborate how it would raise compact. His point like was compactness in terms of related interests, it's compactness issues related in terms of neighborhood configuration. I just want to make sure because the Supreme Court's actual, the court's actual case law as well as comments, if you look at even prior to this court in, okay, I'm, prior to this court in Holder versus Shelby County and others, compactness was very clear. And I'm just understanding, trying to understand what.
Let me just.
Standard, what standards would actually make this less compact? If you're trying to say that citizens will raise the question.
And let me reiterate again, that I'm not saying it violates compactness first. Let me, let me say that. It doesn't violate what would be considered compact. What I'm saying is, is that it raises, or I suspect it could raise questions of how irregular shape it is, because that's the way citizens actually view it. And it does lower the compactness of, of seven and 14. It lowers it. I'm not saying it's not acceptable. All I'm saying is, is that it, irregularly shaped districts, in my experience, raise questions to the general public. That, that's just my experience. And they question why this is there and why it occurred. That's all. I'm not saying that it's a violation. I'm giving you, if I was providing advice to someone who is drawing a plan, which I am, I would say, be careful on this because the citizens may view it as an irregularly shaped aspect of the plan. That's all. I think you're looking at it from a legal definition. I'm not looking at it from that. I'm looking at.
So Mr. Fairfax, I'm not sure if you know the context. Councilman Torrance represents the seventh district. You highlighted the seventh as one of them with an issue. Could you walk the, you know, with your 30 years of experience, could you walk us through, when you look at the map, some of the concerns that you're trying to talk about specific to the seventh? And then, then I think we could all be on the same page.
When I look at that inroads to 12, if my experience on citizens, they may question why. That's all I'm saying. They may question why that occurs. And, and I'm not saying it's not valid. I, I, I can't articulate that as much as I really want to. I'm saying that my experience off of average citizens raise questions. If that inroad wasn't as small and it was rounded off, there probably would not be any questions asked. But because it's a little thin, the questions may arise. And I'm just giving you my experience of, you know, listening to citizens and raising questions. I'm not saying it's not valid. I'm not saying it is, it doesn't meet some compactness standards. I'm giving you just my honest expression of what citizens may bring up. And, and let me just also say, citizens may bring up a lot of things, okay? And plans are still passed. But I'm giving you my opinion of those things where I see potential issues. That's all.
So your answer is you made an assumption, is what you're saying? Just being transparent?
No, no, no. I'm, I'm making a.
You made an assumption.
Educational, no, I'm making an educational statement that I've experienced over decades of questions that I've heard come up. I mean, I'm, I, I'm just telling you the honest opinion of what I actually have heard over decades of people, when they see a plan that changes in a certain way, that raises questions. May not, but I'm just giving you my honest opinion.
Mr. President, I'm utterly, how can I say this? I'm confused in terms of just the opinion being authored, because it makes an assumption based off of the intent of persons that were not, and, and I say this because I can tell you that it's an assumption based off of what you think the public were perceived and not what has been provided by public comment. So I'm just making sure that it's clear to my colleagues that this is an assumption. I, I get your expertise in terms of what you would infer from past experience. And I used the word infer from past experience. But I'm just looking at, and this is me speaking as a person who looked at this map and has considered the issues in terms of not only compactness, the adjusted growth, the gross population, to think about, one, the interested neighborhoods, the interest in terms of political subdivisions within those neighborhoods, in terms of their, their common interests. I just want to make sure that like, as we move forward, Mr. President, that our expert actually visits these neighborhoods and understands the, not only the, the actual numbers, but the persons, to help us inform us. I just want to make sure because I was caught off guard by the mere assumption, but I'm happy to have this discussion.
Yeah, I'm not sure what visiting the dog leg in the seventh will do. I think it's really important, Mr. Fairfax. And, and I appreciate your, you being so gracious to this council, particularly as relates to your expertise in this field for quite some time. If you could take us back to how you define compactness and the formula around compactness, I think it's really important for folks that might not understand what the terminology compactness means, and then come back to this slide to show us, I guess, that dog leg, maybe down North Avenue, and why you just say that that is potentially a concern. That's what I, I heard from you. I didn't hear that you thought that it wouldn't withstand a Supreme Court or a court. I heard that you had just some, looking as seen as if there was some irregularity or some concerns. So if you could walk us through compactness, and then the, the council member wanted to highlight his district, then go back to the map of the seventh district and kind of just talk about from your expert opinion, who served at the federal, state, and local level in doing so, why compactness could be questioned, not that it would withstand a court argument.
Absolutely. And compactness relates to how irregularly shaped or dispersed the district boundary lines are. And I appreciate that there could be neighborhoods that are associated with those areas of the district. But that has nothing to do with compactness. That's, that has, compactness is a geographic concept. And so I'm not saying that it's not valid. It could be very well that those areas match completely with the district. But that doesn't mean that it's not, it's less compact. I'm just talking from a geographic point of view. It has nothing to do with whether they are associated with the district or not. And I'm just giving you, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not valid. And that's the one thing. I'm just giving you what I feel over many decades, unfortunately now, of what I've heard and what people have pointed out specifically to different districts.
So now, if you could just go over the seventh district, the council member wanted to point out his district, to kind of talk about, when you were talking about compactness.
Right.
So you can educate us on what you just kind of defined to us, and then show us specifically on the map what you're talking about. Because I want to dispel this idea that they're just assumptions. And I want the council to understand and know that it's, it's based off of whatever practice or education or, or experience that you have. We appreciate your time.
And so if you look at that addition of seven into 12, it's a narrow construct. It's a narrow addition. And so that narrow addition is done in a non-compact as much as it could be fashion. As I was mentioning before, if it was a little more rounder or added, a little bulkier, I think it wouldn't raise any suspicions or questions with the general public. That's all I'm saying. Now, I understand if that area includes area that's common, there's a commonality, a community of interest that belongs in seven, that's fine. Then that's what would be the answer to anybody that raised that question. They would say, no, well, what you, what you see there may look a little irregular shape, but there's a commonality there that we added. We wanted to add that. And then the case would be over. The question would be resolved. But it still doesn't, the, it still doesn't mean that that added makes that district less compact and also makes 12 less compact. That's a separate issue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns at this time? Chairman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fairfax, I'd like to forgive you for your NC State. I'm a Carolina grad, so. But what I will say is I appreciate the educational portion. Would be helpful, I think, if we had a copy of this presentation, because it may be helpful as we move on in, in the future, because this will not be the only time that we have this conversation. I think even to Councilman Torrance's point and to what you're trying to explain, I think in some ways, we're talking at, in two different, two different silos. I think just in terms of the average, I think what Mr. Fairfax is getting at, from the average person looking at a map, they look at simplicity. And so with a square or a circle, and so from that perspective. But again, not that there's anything invalid about it. And I think even I look at, you know, the ninth district, I can see again where there are some changes that are made, and then part of it takes into account voting precincts and other pieces as well. So all that has to be taken into consideration. So I'm glad that at least we're having this conversation too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely.
Well stated. Thank you, Chairman Bullock.
I just want to make sure for the public's consumption, my approach to viewing this map is based off the dicta from the Supreme Court. In addition to that, I just want to make sure that we are clear that I hear you in terms of like what the shape looks like. That assumption is assuming the logic of a Baltimore city citizen. And I just want to make sure that my council members understand that that was, was inferred. While I understand this is our paid expert, I think that we should be careful in terms of how we decide, define these things publicly as well, right? Because the conversation should be about, one, not only the, the Supreme Court standards, but also the state standards, but also looking at the fact that these precincts were ugly and drawn by someone else that was not us, right? And I just want to be transparent, because I think that what's lost in this conversation is both not only an assumption, but an infamiliarity with the actual precincts that we're using these to draw the lines. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah. And I, I think that that's where we just simply agree to disagree. As a person who served that district for five years, who understands and know the makeup of the district, when I look at it, I totally understand. Again, that's not a reason not to support the boundary. I'm not sure what the reasoning behind, but compactness, whenever you have, you know, two or three streets, and it's a couple of different areas throughout the map, you know, obviously that is a potential concern for compactness. And I, I think from his expert opinion, that's what he provided us. Look, it's for the council to, to take into account, you know, and, and figuring out move, how we move forward. I mean, but that's the purpose of our dialogue today. And thank you for, you know, highlighting that. We truly appreciate it. Are there any additional questions or concerns? Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
There we go, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a sort of clarifying question with regard to the population deviation numbers on here. Does this reflect the change from the census? So from the 2010 census to the 2020 census? Or does this reflect the change in population movements from the mayor's map?
This reflects the 2020 adjusted data. And so the percentages are the percentage away from the ideal population size. So you see District one is 1.64% higher than the ideal population size, which is 692. And of course, again, I'm using the adjusted data. So each one tells you the percentage away from the ideal population size.
Got it. So that would suggest that our technically smallest district would be the 12th, and the largest would be the second.
That is correct. And the reason why I believe it's at minus 5.33%, it's still within 10% deviation, the plan is, is I believe the drawing probably was done using the unadjusted amounts. And then when I use the adjusted amounts, it probably brought it to that minus 5.33%.
I see. And just for clarification, for the adjusted amounts, this adds in what kinds of things?
Say it again, I missed.
The adjusted amounts, that adds in what, what types of populations that, the prison.
The prison population, that's right. That's where you reallocate population to the last known address.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning, can you confirm, I guess, the adjusted discussion that Mr. Fairfax just went over?
Yeah, I would, I would want to do some more research with the Law Department, but I believe we use the unadjusted population.
So just for the record, I, I think Planning, you, you're going to come back to us, Sarah, but we believe that the map was built around unadjusted, right?
Yes, that's what I believe.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions and concerns from members? I see Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Does that work? Perfect. Just a question by law, is there any difference in how we are able or required to consider the unadjusted versus adjusted?
The, the state states that the locality should use the adjusted data. That said, again, as I mentioned, except. That said, again, as I mentioned, exceptions to the rules, if it was so close that the difference was very negligible, then I can see that the allowance of using the unadjusted data. Whether this falls in that case, I'm not sure.
I see. So if it falls within like a percentage, as you explained earlier?
Yeah, it's not a percentage, but it's just, for example, the courts have allowed localities to exceed the 10%. Even though they have that fine rule of 10%, they've allowed, you know, jurisdictions to exceed the 10%. But it depends upon what is the reason and rationale for exceeding that 10%.
Got it. Thank you.
And if I can just chime in really quickly on the, for the legal standpoint, the laws that Mr. Fairfax is referring to, these are for the State General Assembly and the state congressional districts. There's no, that doesn't apply to the City Council. Now, again, it doesn't say that we couldn't do that, but to your point, if it didn't change the overall percentages, then, you know.
Right, right. That's, that's what we're working off of, is that 10% number for, for the, for the districts.
The Maryland Local Government Code supposedly passed in 2019 actually talks for county and the municipality. It specifically targets a county or municipality, and so I believe that if they are state residents, then they should be reallocated, incarcerated persons I'm talking about.
Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can, Mr. Fairfax and Mr. Salisbury, can you resolve? Did you guys say something different?
I think so.
So I think Mr. Fairfax is referring to the public local laws. We would have to look into that. But again, I think our understanding is, we hadn't taken this data into account. If we saw any evidence that it was going to actually change the numbers, we'd certainly be happy to, to look at that. But, but, but we would have to do more research on that.
Mr. Fairfax?
I think right now, if you use the adjusted, it still falls within the acceptable population deviation. So it's, it's valid to use that plan, because even with the adjusted, not drawing the plans using the adjusted, it's still within the acceptable deviation. So just that it's higher. It's 9.9, something like that percent deviation, and it probably would be lower if they actually used the, the unadjusted.
Thank you. At this time, are there any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any additional questions or concerns. So I guess the next steps for the council members is, you know, please look at your districts, identify if there are any questions, concerns, or issues specific to your district. Then from there, we'll continue to work with the administration. I believe the administration has promised to, I believe the administration has promised to provide the council the shape file in case there are any amendments or adjustments that the council would like. Again, we have a very short window. We're going to have to come back on Friday. And then we're going to ultimately have a special meeting on Monday if there are any ideas for change. If this council is not of the opinion that there are any areas for change, and that we're just moving forward with the, the mayor's map. Again, the, the Friday and Monday is not a critical. We could pass it whenever, and the mayor could, you know, sit on it based off of the three rules that we went over with the, the city solicitor's office. I just want to be very clear in understanding that that is what is setting the schedule. That's why we are here. With that, we have no one that has signed up to testify or online, but if there is someone, I know you were considering if you want to do, but now I was going to provide you the opportunity. So if you could come up, please state your name, if you would like to tell us neighborhood or organization you're coming from. And you ultimately have two minutes to speak. You, you press the, the button on the right. Yes.
Hello, thank you. My name's Angela Zanti. I'm with Morrell Park Community Association. I'm the president. We just seen the map yesterday, so it was kind of shocked to us. I didn't really get anything written down, unfortunately, but just going off of thought, we were hoping to keep our community within one district. Ms. Porter has been absolutely amazing. She's been working with us. The proposed map actually has a small cut that takes Morrell Park into District 9. No offense. And it kind of put us all like, what is happening? You know, we really wanted to keep our community within the same district. Again, Ms. Porter has been amazing working with us. We're, we have so much going on. A new board through the association started in January, and there's so much to get done. And Ms. Porter has really been kind of holding her hand through it. And she's been amazing. So we're hoping you would consider looking into keeping us in the same district. And that's really it. I appreciate your consideration, and thank you for having this meeting for the community. Unfortunately, no one could get the time off to come with me, but I'm here. So, thank you.
Madam President, thank you so much, not only for your civic engagement, but coming and participating in this hearing. This council's able and ready and prepared to work with Councilwoman Porter, if so, her wishes. I think that's one example. Again, if there's others, you know, we'll look to kind of work. Again, we have a very short clock to the council. We have to do it basically by Friday, and then into Monday. So thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And at this time, we'd like to open it up to anyone online or anyone else in the chambers that would like to provide any public testimony. Hearing and seeing none, you're going to go through, is one person online? Okay, I think we have, maybe have one person online that would like to provide testimony.
Jim Prost, and I'm on the board-
Hello, sir. Sir, please, you were on mute. So if you could start your testimony over by your name and affiliation, and then go into your testimony, you have two minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay. My name is James Prost. I'm on the Bolton Hill Board. The Bolton Hill Board has drafted a letter. We do not wish to have Bolton Hill literally split in two between the 11th and 7th District. It would cause, I think, a lot of problems in trying to service the area, and we don't want to exacerbate demographic differences between what is, you know, the northern portion of Bolton Hill and the southern portion of Bolton Hill. I don't know what the population of the precincts are. This would be precincts 1401 and 04, I believe, 14, 14001 and 14004. We would wish those to be retained in the Councilman Costello's district. And we very much think that that can be done without any problems in the balance. The council District 9 is, is, Council District 11, rather, is under, under the average. So adding some back from all the changes that have been made to Council District 11, we think that would still provide the balance, and it would still constitute a, a compact contiguous district. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. If you could remain on the line, I think Councilman, Chairman Costello would like to respond or add.
Mr. Prost, thanks for your testimony and being engaged in the process. I've had a number of conversations with Bolton Hill Community Association leadership, and wanted to let you know that President Mosby and myself are in receipt of the letter from BHCA, from the BHCA President, Ms. Amy Sheridan. So thank you, Mr. Prost.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else online that would like to provide public comment? I don't see any additional hands raised. So I think, I think it's a very informative hearing with some really good dialogue. Again, council members, I ask that you prioritize your maps and working with your community to determine if you are comfortable with the proposed map, or if you have some questions or additional concerns that weren't raised today. With that, we're going to-
Mr. President, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't intend to-
Oh, no. I was about to reconvene, I was about to recess, so yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for allowing the administration to present today. Just for sake of being able to make sure that we're in alignment to see if the administration could receive the presentation that was, yes, a presentation from Mr. Fairfax that was received today. And then, of course, about being able to have any information about any changes which the council is looking to do, our and/or proposed maps that we will have, if I could, we receive that.
No, totally. And I guess to that point, I guess the administration will answer the call of the council to provide shape maps to the council, or at least access to shape maps to the council, and also an additional feedback on, I guess, the solicitor's opinion, that the confirmation that we could have more time and the mayor would not plan on running out the clock, that we still would have the 60-day window if there was an opportunity for us to amend the proposed map. And if so choose the mayor veto, the council will have the runway room to override the veto.
To, to, just for the sake of clarity, I want to work with Planning regarding the shape file request and about whether or not that is in direct, whether or not council is working with director, with our planning office, or whether or not it is directly just provided to the council. So I just wanted to be able to-
We'll do either way.
Yep, done. Great, thank you.
And then the second thing about just clarifying if we need to take immediate action on Friday, or if the administration will be willing to work with the council so the council can have additional time to do its due diligence and working with our communities, so we can stay within that 60-day time period and allow for the council to ultimately override any potential vetoes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're going to get back to us on that? I mean, because we need to-
Oh, yes, sir. We're committed. Yes, we're committed to being able to confer with law, first of all, so that we are fully in alignment with what the actual ask is, and then we will come back. Yes, sir.
Okay, and to the council members, when we receive information back from the administration, I would just ask if, if you could just copy the entire council. That way, we're not any bottleneck. If you could copy the entire council on, I guess, whatever decision is made from the administration.
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Mr. President, if, could we consider an evening meeting too, so residents can be present and give comment? I just want to make sure that like, if we're going, yeah, and it's something that a few of my residents will like to provide comment about staying in the 7th as well. So I just want to make sure if we can schedule some time for them.
Definitely open to that. You know, obviously, if there's a determination that the administration is willing to maybe work with the council so we can stay inside of the 60 days, and any amendments that we would have would be proposed, and the administration could get back to us as quickly as possible, then, you know, we can, we can definitely schedule another evening meeting. You know, obviously, very tight schedule and working in the confines of things that were already planned, and this is why we came up with this. I, I think it's a great suggestion. Yes, Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. If there's a determination made from the mayor's office, if we could have that in writing on letterhead, what that, if there's a commitment to be made with respect to that, that would be appreciated.
Yes, and, and I've asked Mr. Chief of Staff to send it to all council members. Please don't just send it to me, but kind of let us know. That way, we'll understand and know the posture that we'll be in on Friday and moving forward. Are there any additional questions or concerns? Well, at this time, I'll put this meeting into recess. We are scheduled to reconvene on Friday at 9:30. Is that right? Thank you for tuning in. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.